Good evening, Mo. I'd like to call to order the August 14th Committee of the Whole of the Groton Town Council. All members are present with the exception of Councilors Aparie, who will be with us next meeting, and Councilor O'Bree cannot be with us tonight. Calendar and Communications, Councilor Baumgartner.
So, I know we're concluding our summer months here, but it's been a really fantastic summer with all the events here in Groton. I know a lot of folks are really happy about the formation of the Beautification Committee. And so, I know that was LeAnn and Rachel's ballpark and preceded my time in joining the committee. But I know there are a lot of folks throughout the town who are looking forward to joining and to speak to one of Counselor Heed's initiatives with the recycling. There are a lot of folks who also recognize that there have been an issue with littering, particularly folks who have thrown around, you know, various plastic, paper, you know, plastic straws and cups. So, you know, young people and some older folks who live in town, I know have a lot of shared agreement on that, and I look forward to working with you on that. And that is all.
Thank you. Councilor Parker?
Nothing to report.
Councilor Franco?
I took a ride on the Heritage, I don't know exactly, it's called the Heritage Boat.
The Water Taxi?
The Water Taxi, it's in London Bag, and that was nice. And the Beautification Committee will have its first meeting on September 10th at 5:30 at the Groton Public Library, and all are welcome.
Thank you. Councilor Heed?
Welcome to report.
Councilor Atwater?
I attended the SCAR recycling meeting. I had an email from a person questioning some of my thoughts about the retirement plan in the town, so I last week attended the Retirement Board meeting, and I have a better understanding of what they're doing. I'm still a little concerned about a few things, but they're heading in the right direction. I attended a teacher's negotiation as a representative from the council for their new contract, and I've had a couple of questions about the, at least in District 7, the new trash collection company and some of the questions of why. So, I'm meeting with the fire chief, Mystic Fire Chief, sometime either tomorrow or Thursday. And I voted today.
Yes. Councilor Schmidt?
I also voted today, and I had a meeting this afternoon with Bob Zagami, our Director of Human Resources, and it was very beneficial.
Thank you. It is primary election day in Connecticut. You have about an hour and a half until the polls close, so if you're registered as a Democrat or a Republican, you can vote, as we have closed primaries in Connecticut. As far as communications, Mr. Burton and I met with a member of the Economic Development Commission to discuss some ideas that the person had. And today I took a meeting with Dr. Seifert, who is the Campus Director at Avery Point, just as a way of opening communications and discussing some things that they have coming up. Approval of minutes. Oh, Mr. Burton, did you have any communications?
None today.
Approval of minutes, Councilor Baumgartner. This is page two.
So, I move that we accept the resolution pertaining to the Town Council minutes. So, be it resolved that the minutes of the Town Council meeting of June 26, 2018 are hereby accepted and approved. So moved.
I think we are on the minutes of July 24th, if I'm not mistaken. Yes, the minutes of July 24th.
Wrong date. So, again, I make a motion to accept the Town Council Committee of the Whole minutes. So, be it here resolved that the minutes of the Town Council Committee of the Whole meeting of July 24, 2018 are hereby accepted and approved. So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Baumgartner, seconded by Parker. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor of accepting the minutes of the July 24th COW, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Seven. So moved unanimously. Counselor Parker, new business. Item 5A, which is on page 12.
To recommend a resolution setting the public hearing date for the merit property conversion on September 4, 2008. I so moved.
Second.
Moved by Parker and seconded by Schmidt. So, is there any discussion on setting a public hearing date for the merit property conversion? Councilor Atwater?
It was my understanding that we had to adjourn to go to a Town Council meeting and not just a council at whole.
Yes, if you look at the agenda, once this goes through COW, which is what we're doing right now, we're going to adjourn. We're not adjourn, we're going to recess, convene a council, and then come back in.
My mistake.
That's fine. Anyone else have questions on this? Comments? That's okay. Did you want to address anything with this, Mr. Burton?
Sure. Just to mention, the town did go before Judge Froschetti of the Connecticut Superior Court last week to request lifting the restrictions on the merit property created by the public vote to set aside funds to purchase the property. This is separate from the portion of deep, working with deep on the property. The town, as I said, so we were successful, those restrictions have been lifted, meaning in terms of that part of the legal process, we can build at the property. We are still going through the deep process. We had a previous public hearing on swapping the conservation easement between merit property and Boulder Heights. We're adding in the Kolnaski School/King property, and we still need to have that public hearing as part of the process. That's the last piece of this process, I believe.
We all believe and hope. Anything else? Okay, so all those in favor of recommending a resolution setting the public hearing date for the merit property on September 4, 2018, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? So moved unanimously. So, what I'm going to do now is we're going to recess, let's see what time it is. It is 6:40. We're going to recess the COW, and I don't think I need to take a vote on that, I'm just recessing the COW. So, we are out of COW. All right, so now what I need you all to do is to find your agenda for the council, the special council meeting, please. So, I am going to call to order, like using the gavel, right? Tuesday, August 14th, Special Meeting of the Groton Town Council, we are called to order at 6:41. And roll call, all are present with the exception of Councilors Aparie and O'Bree, who notified that they could not be here this evening. New business. Councilor Franco? Would you read the resolution, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
I make a motion to adopt a resolution that the Town Council hold a public hearing per state statute 7-131N for the conversion of the merit property to a non-park or open space use on Tuesday, September 4, 2018, at a meeting beginning at 6:30 PM, and to direct the Town Clerk to publish the notice thereof twice per the referenced statute. I so moved.
Second.
Moved by Franco and seconded by Parker. And this is just the formal setting of the hearing now. Any discussion on this? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of setting a public hearing for September 4, 2018, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? So moved unanimously. I want to-
Motion made.
Moved by Atwater. Is there a second to adjourn?
Second.
Seconded by Heed. All those in favor of adjurings, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? We are adjourned at 6:42. That was fast. Okay, so I'm calling the COW back into session. It came back at 6:43. And now we are on to 5B. All right, I hit all the steps, correct, Mr. Burton? We're good?
Right.
Okay. So, we're on to 5B, so this is Counselor Heed, the Filling of the Office Assistant 2 Position, on page 13, please.
So, the recommendation is no formal action is required, but filling a vacant position requires the concurrence of the Town Council.
Thank you. Do you have questions for Mr. Burton about this? Mr. Barry is with us as well. Please come forward, thank you for coming out tonight. Did you want to tell us a little bit about the opening and the need for the filling of the position?
Sure.
Thank you.
Position that works in recreation at Spicer House, retired after 28 years. That position is the primary point of contact for folks that walk in, they also process the mail and registration, and that's where, when the phone rings, they're the first person to answer the phone. So, in the memo that I had sent to you, I said that they process over 6,000 phone calls a year. They also, in addition to the primary responsibility of customer service, they also take care of processing timesheets for instructors, part-time employees. They process and record all the information for the park's maintenance, their hours and what they spend on, what equipment they use. So, this is an essential position to the department.
This is not a financial assistant, right? Your financial assistant is separate from this, correct?
That is correct. And this is a position that was approved in the 2019 budget.
Do you have questions for Mr. Barry about the filling of the position?
I did want to add that if this position is filled internally, I will be back asking to have that subsequent position filled also.
So, there may be someone moving into-
Potentially. We are going to open this up to try to get as broad a pool as possible, but there are two Office 2 Positions at the Senior Center, so potentially, there could be somebody moving, but I don't know.
So, this doesn't require a vote, is there any objection? Just, we're just concurring, I suppose is the correct term. Any objection to filling this position? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Barry. We are on to item 5C. Councilor Atwater, would you like to just introduce this? There's no formal action being taken, but if you want to read that on page 15 for us.
Is this on page 15?
Yes.
Do you want me to read the whole thing?
No, you can just read a little bit of-
The issue. "The town of Groton is working on plans for building a new combined middle school as well as two new elementary schools as part of the Groton 2020 Plan. The council has been asked to consider constructing these schools utilizing a project labor agreements."
Thank you. So, this evening, we have several people with us. We have people from the Builders Association, we have people representing the unions, and we have our attorney here with us tonight. And I think the way we're going to handle this is that our attorney's going to give us a broad overview of what a PLA is, how it functions, and then we've allotted 10 minutes for each side to present their views to us, because we want to have time afterwards to have questions for everybody. So, we're just asking everybody to comply with the time limit, that way we do have time at the end for questioning. So, Attorney Doug Inis here, please. Thank you.
Evening, everybody.
Thank you for coming out.
Sure. So, I think my role in this discussion is just to provide you with some really basic background on PLAs. I believe you've already heard about PLAs as being pre-hire agreements. And there is a statute that governs what the considerations are that you would need to make in terms of deciding whether or not a PLA is something that the town would like to pursue. And the statute then also sets forth a number of criteria that would need to be included in an agreement. So, I thought perhaps it would be most instructive if I shared that with you, so that you can have those, you know, as you're listening to the presentations or watching them, and so then you can, you know, ask questions as well based on these. So, I'm going to hand this out first.
And while the attorney's doing that, we also have a letter here from the Permanent School Building Committee. I see Chair Austin LaFrance is here, we all have copies of your letter. Thank you.
And what I just note, and I just put in bold, there's indication that a public entity, you may require a project labor agreement for any public works project when you've determined on a project-by-project basis and acting within your discretion that it is in the public's interest to require such an agreement. So ultimately, should you look toward approving this and saying, yes, we want to have project labor agreements, you do have to make this type of finding and determination. The list that's included after that, it's not necessarily dispositive, it's not necessarily everything, but it is a list that basically you will see, you know, if you read any articles or anything like that on these types of issues that come up again from time to time. So, I think they're the tried and true types of things that you would be looking at, and those may be some of the things you may want to ask questions about that are listed there. After that, the statute just goes on to say that if you do require that there be project labor agreements, there are certain things that have to be in the contracts. And again, listed, specific, et cetera. I wasn't really planning to go into any great detail about these. You do have the letter from the Permanent School Board Committee indicating that it has done some research on the issue specifically and providing you with an opinion, and then allowing, you know, the two groups to explain to you what their positions are and why they feel that these are, would be a good or not-so-good thing for the town, and then be happy to answer questions after.
Thank you. All right, so I think we'll go into the two presentations, and then since the attorney will be here, we'll be able to ask her questions at the end then. All right, so the gentlemen and ladies from the Builders Association? Hello. If you could just tell us your names and state the correct title of your entity that you're employed by, because I don't think I got it right, so.
Before I do that, I do have a PowerPoint, however, I made copies, is it appropriate if I pass that out?
You have 10 minutes, so whatever you think's going to work. If you think you can do a PowerPoint and talk in 10 minutes, or if you just want to pass out the paper and let us look at it, it's your choice.
So, my name is Chris Fricksel, I'm the President of the Associated Builders and Contractors of Connecticut.
Associated Builders and Contractors? Thank you.
We are a trade association made up of approximately 200 companies that represent open shop construction in Connecticut. And so, I'm here to talk a little bit about project labor agreements, obviously. So first, what is a project labor agreement? It's a unique contract that sets forth specific requirements not found in most construction contracts. Most of the construction, school construction and otherwise in this state is done without a project labor agreement, and for good reason. Specifically, contractors who sign a PLA must adhere to union work rules typically, recognize the union as their representative on the job, pay into the union benefit funds, and hire from the union hall. So, who supports the PLAs? Clearly, that is the labor unions who benefit most. Essentially, PLAs are a marketing tool used to monopolize construction contracts for the labor unions. You might hear a little bit about safety and how important safety is, and of course, we agree with that. ABC members are very concerned and pay a lot of attention to safety. There's no existing OSHA data that says PLAs deliver accident-free construction projects. That wouldn't be possible. Unfortunately, accidents happen on projects that are PLA and non-PLA, so there's no guaranteeing that an accident wouldn't happen whether or not a union or a non-union firm was performing the work. All employees on prevailing wage jobs, which this would be, require an OSHA 10 card whether they're a member of the union or not. A myth is that PLAs provide better-trained workers, and that's not true. In fact, non-union employees have access to state-approved apprenticeship programs and safety programs, just as the unions do. And many non-union companies take advantage of those apprenticeship and craft training programs. In 2007, CTABC, we helped found the Construction Education Center, which is located in Plainville, and we do provide apprenticeship training, we provide continuing education, OSHA, safety training. And that's not to say, you will not hear me disparage in any way, union workers, they're very well-trained, they're very good at what they do, and so, from my perspective, this is, you know, saying that non-union workers are capable of doing this is not saying that union workers are not capable of doing this, because they are. So, we believe that the contracts should be rewarded regardless of labor affiliation. There is also a misconception that project labor agreements protect job site fairness, and that, of course, is not true as well. Connecticut law mandates prevailing wage on these projects. Connecticut law mandates that each worker is correctly classified as an employee and receive benefits. Law mandates that each employer carry the appropriate workers' compensation insurance. And state laws governing these projects are very strict, and they are well-enforced. A project labor agreement will not ensure that those rules are enforced more because there's a PLA. Those rules won't be enforced either way. On time and on budget, that's something else that you might hear, that a project labor agreement will guarantee the project is on time and on budget. There's no contract that will guarantee that. In fact, oftentimes, project labor agreements are the reason for significant cost overruns. I will read, if I may, there's a Board of Education Minutes from South Windsor on October 13, 2016, publicly available. A question was posed by one of the board members to Colliers International, who is the owner's rep independent, they're not representing the unions or open shop contractors, just the town, and he was asked his opinion on project labor agreements, and he stated that professional estimators say that you should add 10% to 20% if you're going to use a project labor agreement. Due to the restrictive nature of a PLA, most, if not all, non-union contractors will refuse to bid on that job. Non-union companies make up roughly 84% of the construction industry in this state, and so you'll be limiting the amount of bidders on the project significantly to benefit a very small portion of the industry. And when you do that, necessarily, competition goes down and costs goes up. There may also be some discussion about PLAs and local workers. PLAs typically require a good-faith effort to hire local labor on the project, and oftentimes those goals are not met. And if they're not met, nothing happens. So, you can include local hiring goals in your contract regardless whether or not you use a PLA, but again, restricting or eliminating 84% of the potential bidders on a project is going to make it more difficult to hit local hiring goals. Why the open shop won't bid? You heard a little bit about the fact that state law allows these project labor agreements, and you'll hear that open shop contractors are allowed to bid on the project. That is true. We will not argue that open shop contractors are allowed to bid on the project, but they won't. There are usually requirements to hire from union halls. PLAs typically, contractors are only allowed to keep 15% of their own workforce, and the rest of that labor must be hired from a union hall. If you're a contractor, who cares about your employees? And you want to use employees that you trust and have worked with over the years, you're not going to enjoy not being able to use your own employees on a job.
You're halfway through your time, sir.
There's also a requirement to pay into the union funds, and contractors are required to pay into the union funds as if they were an employee of the union. This includes everything from pension contributions that the employee will never see, to miscellaneous funds usually earmarked to go toward a particular union's political activities. It also requires double benefits. If I'm a contractor and I'm paying my employees their 401K, into their 401K, the PLA will require that I also pay into the union pension program. So, by paying double benefits essentially, it makes it so that I can't be competitive when I bid. And again, these are all reasons why an open shop contractor would not choose to bid this project. Groton has had a lot of success in recent years with non-PLA construction projects. This building specifically, the police station, Fitch High School, and currently Elagrasa High School is under construction without a PLA, and those are all going well. Other projects in the area in eastern Connecticut as well are also being done without project labor agreements. I'd like to get to skip ahead to a couple of recent case studies, specifically Stamford Cherry Hill School last year, that project went out to bid with a PLA. There were two bids on that project that came back $17 million over budget. The PLA was pulled off, put out to bid, there were eight bids on that project and on budget. And now that project is being done on budget, on time, again, 40% of that construction is being done by union workers. So, we're not talking about, you know, when you're talking about a PLA or a non-PLA, it's not union labor or non-union labor. The PLA is union-only. Non-PLA is everybody. Equal access and opportunity to bid on the project. Dunkin' Donuts Park, I don't have to go into the issues there. Over budget, they lost an entire season in that ballpark, that was a project labor agreement. South Windsor Orchard Hill School, built without a PLA, project went well. And again, 56% of the workers were union workers on that project, not a PLA. Rocky Hill Intermediate School, currently being done. Referendum passed $48 million budget on that school. They are $8 million under budget, not a PLA. And they're doing it with union and non-union labor, and because they're under budget, they're able to go out and put additional safety betterments on the school. Imagine being able to do that. So, I've included in here a couple of newspaper-
You have 1 minute, sir.
...articles. Bids for Stanford School, project nearly $17 million over budget, a few others. I'd hate to say I told you so. I'd hate to see a negative article in the day, and I'd hate to put that article in my next presentation in front of a council like this. So, please allow open access and opportunity for all contractors and put this project out without a PLA.
Thank you very much. Would you mind sticking around, that way if the council has questions after the other presentation, please?
Not a problem at all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Was it Mr. Driscoll, did you say, sir?
Fricksel, F-R-Y-X-E-L-L.
Thank you. Okay, so then we have the ladies and gentlemen from the unions. And there's a familiar face. Representative Dela Cruz is with us this evening.
Straight from work.
Straight from work, okay. If you could also just identify yourself and the organization that you're with, please.
Keith Brothers, President of the Norwich, New Orleans Building Trades Council. Hello to everybody again.
Mr. Brothers?
Bob Chevry, I'm the Attorney for the Connecticut State Building Trades.
Thank you.
David Och, President of the Connecticut State Building Trades.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just want to thank you guys for actually having us here, because there are always two sides to every story.
Right.
All right? And I think we did our presentation about a couple months ago, and to tell you the truth, it's a lot to take in. It's a lot to, because you hear all these numbers, like the 84% of contractors, are those 84% to 16%? Are those all DAS-approved contractors that could actually bid on a job? That's a question that you may want to ask when they come back up. My whole time in the union has been, in '89, I started as a non-union sheet metal worker. I worked there for eight years. I worked on a lot of projects that were supposed to be paying me a certain rate. After eight years, I actually ended up with a $1,600 pension and never was paid in the right time. And if you don't sue these companies in the right time, you don't get any of the money back. Those are some things that they don't talk about that happen across the state every day. It's easy for me to go and cherry-pick out of 169 municipalities how many school projects are going on, and then just highlight the ones that are going well. There's other ones that don't go so well, and you won't see those in presentations, and we may not have numbers to those just yet because they're not yet built. So, again, I don't want to take a lot of time here. I do want to let you guys know that Representative Conley wants you to know she wishes she could be here, and she does support the PLA. And again, take your time, because this is an issue that in Hartford I learned, you have two different sides of the story. A lot of times, it's called lobbyist, I guess that's what we'd be doing right now if you looked at the other side. But make sure you get all the information, and I think when you've got a good grasp of it, I feel like I know which way that you may want to go. So, let these folks do their presentation, and hopefully we can help you out.
Okay.
I think what we're going to do is we're going to refer to our attorney to answer some of those questions and concerns that the ABC had. The good news is that Bob Chevry wrote that statute that currently sits- The good news is that Bob Chevry wrote that statute that currently sits as law at the state Capitol, so Bob, I'm going to refer to you for the-
Sure.
-next question.
Thank you. Um, you know, but the ABC has their viewpoint, and they always contend they represent the vast majority of contractors, but as the point has already been made, the vast majority of contractors are not in a position to build schools, okay? You may get small contractors that do, that do small jobs, and they're members of their association, but to say they have the majority of the market, they are not the majority of the market. They cherry picked a couple of schools. We have, we have had over 275 project labor agreements in the state of Connecticut. And with, I will check on that Cherry Hill School, but every one that I've been involved in has come in on time, on budget, every single one. The reason I wrote the statute is because you get the perception that the PLA is exclusive. It is not. It is inclusive. All contractors are encouraged to bid. All workers are encouraged to participate. And with regard to the contention that local labor is not followed through, we always give preferences to local residents. We take them in as apprentices. Every major city in Connecticut has committed to build their schools, New Haven, Hartford, Bridgeport, New London, multiple schools. Why? Because we commit to apprentices, and when we go before the committee, we say, you know, if, if a local contractor takes that apprentice for one school, where's he going to go the next year? We do these multiple schools, we take in the apprentices, we don't give them a job, we give them a career, and that's the difference. They've talked about the funds. These are not union funds. These are Taft-Hartley funds, which are governed by a board of half-labor, half-management. The idea that someone would work on a project for a year or two years and not get their pension is not correct. We allow any non-union worker, and by the way, when you go to a hiring hall, it's like going to a deli. You pick a number, you are put on the list. When your number comes up, if you are qualified, you go to work, whether you are a member or not a member. So the idea that it is exclusive is absolutely incorrect. And if you work on a project labor agreement, let's say I work for ABC Company, and I'm not a union member, and I worked there for two years, I have the opportunity to divert what would otherwise be a pension contribution into an annuity. And three months after I leave that job, I take every penny of that money, plus the accumulated interest, rather, investment gains, and that goes to the individual. So they do not pay double benefits, and they do not lose their pension. And with regard to healthcare, yes, they would join the union healthcare, okay? But the way it works is, it takes, it's just like if you get hired in a, in a normal company, it might take 30 or 60 days to become covered by the health. When you leave that project, you get between three months and six months of coverage after you leave. So there's a little wait period in the beginning, but there's a tail in the end. So the contractors are not paying double. If, what happens is the ABC chooses not to build, and that's why it's in the statute, okay? This is, everyone is encouraged to bid. If they choose not to bid, that's a business decision that they make. No one can force someone to bid. With regard to the allow, allowability to bring-
Excuse me, you're halfway through your time.
Sure. With the availability to bring their own personnel, we call them key people. If you have key people, now you have to understand a construction company, you may have foreman, lead man, those are your key people. The other people come from the community. If you're looking at statute, one of the things you consider is employment opportunities for the community. There's nothing worse than going by a project and seeing no one from your town working there. The people who will take pride in your building are the people who live here, work here, and spend here, raise their kids here. There isn't one project that we've built, school project, that the school committee, the building committee hasn't been proud of. And you may ask yourself, if it's such a bad idea, why would an institution like Yale build every single one of their buildings with a project labor agreement? Safety, quality, and commitment to the community, that's what they do. So the ABC can tell you who they may or may not have bid. For all you know, a contractor from Texas could bid, and who's he going to bring? Well, with a PLA, he can bring key people, and the rest will come from your community. There will be people from your community or the surrounding towns, and we can and do give preference. Another thing that's in the statute is apprenticeship. I heard, I heard this school, I urge you to go to their school. I urge you to do that. And then I urge you to go to the schools of the building trades, because there is no comparison. Go to the operating engineers, go to the sheet metal, go to the Labor's Training Center in Palmford. These, these are magnificent facilities where the kid who is not going to college gets a career, okay? We take kids out of vocational school and start them off again as apprentices. The ABC takes them and says, oh, you're a journeyman. There's a difference, and the quality is important. And the apprenticeship, that's why it's in here. Veterans, we put that in the statute, commitments to veterans. Every PLA has a helmets-to-hot-hat program. We take veterans and give them preference. They don't have to get in the normal line of apprenticeship, we take them right in. These are things that are valued to your community. A PLA is sound public policy. They've been around since, since building construction. I mean, the Hoover Dam was built with a PLA. They talk about safety. I don't have the statistics, but I can tell you, in New York City, there were 33 deaths in the last two years. Three union, 30 non-union, open shop. There is a difference. There is a major difference in the quality of the construction and in the safety instruction that we give our journeymen and apprentices. Not just apprentices go to school, there are journeyman upgrades all the time. So, I heard that the laws are strictly enforced by the ABC. I wish that were the case. My own experience dictates it is not the case.
You have one minute.
I suppose in closing, I would urge you to read the statute and, and not to be pressured and not to believe fake news. I have been hearing the ABC, fake news about the 20% overruns. You put the schools side by side, believe me, there's a lot of factors that could cause an overrun. But prevailing wage is prevailing wage. If no one's cheating, you should get the same wage and benefit package, union or non-union. And labor costs, depending upon your project, is 20 to 20%. 20% of the, of the whole thing is labor cost. So how could it cost 20% more? Does that mean no one's getting paid? It's fake news. It is not what's going on. Lastly, ONG, who I guess is your construction manager, has relationships with the carpenters, the operating engineers, the laborers, the ironworkers. Why is that? Because ONG is a quality contractor, that's why. So again, I thank you very much for your time. This is your discretion. One of the things I urged when we wrote this, and I was privileged to work with the governor to write this piece of legislation, is it should be your discretion, because for 20 years, we were threatened with lawsuits, and people in your suit was, your seat was saying, well, should I go with a PLA and risk the town being sued or not? Well, that's gone. You will not be sued by anybody. It's your sound discretion, and I urge you to read the statute. It is sound public policy. It is good for your community, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. And thank you, Representative Dela Cruz. Okay, so, that was a lot to take in. I'm not sure if you have questions right now that you wanted to ask of anyone. Councilor Baumgardner.
Not a question so much to, to the speakers, but more so to potentially the, the school building committee, if, if anybody would be willing to speak. There is a, a part of the letter where it stated that Fitch High School was built, 50% union, 50% non-union, and certainly love to hear about what kind of the results of that have been, what, you know, whether or not the town over the years have put in additional money to remediate any problems associated with that, and potentially what those, I don't want to say who would be at fault, you know, for those problems, but I think we should, you know, probably get more background on, on that project, especially since it, you know, went equally to both sides.
Okay. Mr. Austin LaFrance is here, and Mr. Schneider is here, and I think Mr. Norris was here somewhere as well. Did, did you want to hear from them tonight? We can invite them up if you want to.
Well, I think considering the, you know, the urgency, I, I would hope so, so.
Are you gentlemen willing to come up and talk about this?
I, I will start.
Mr. LaFrance, are you, could you come up, please, since the letter came from you, and Councilor Baumgardner's question was directed at what was contained in the letter?
Hi, my name, my name is Gary Schneider, Director of Public Works. I was here during the Fitch High School. Questions like that, I would like to go back and research all the contractors that we've had on the, on the Fitch project. I know we all know about the window issue. It was Cherry, Cherry Hill was the contractor that did it. There was a large remediation project they did, but I'd like to go through the records for the council of, of what was a union shop and what was a non-union shop on it. I don't want to talk from memory, I don't want to talk from, you know, hearsay or anything. I want to provide the facts, so. We can do that. We can provide that to the council within a week, so I'll get it to the town manager to provide to the council then.
Thank you. Mr. LaFrance, did you want to address anything, or it's found on your letter at all?
Not specifically to this question, because as Gary has indicated, I'd have to go back and look to see what percentage, union, non-union was involved with the Cherry Hill issue. I think that's what you're speaking to, is it not?
Uh, to the, the Fitch High School building project as a whole, nothing, you know, not specifically window issue or-
Oh, oh. As a project as a whole, it was very interesting, because it did begin with, as some of you will recall, a floating rat, when the unions decided that they wanted to try and close it down. We did not have a PLA on that project, nor did we have a PLA on the elementary school projects. All of those came in on budget, on time, with the exception of the window issue at the school. And as Gary has indicated, we'd have to go back and look specifically to see how that occurred in terms of whether that's something that a PLA might have been able to deal with or not.
Councilor Franco.
So in the letter, you're stating that the PLA is now being introduced late in the project planning, and the architects and the construction managers through projects are under contract. And then you're going to state that those contracts would have to be renegotiated, and this would be time and money.
That's correct.
So what type of, so let's just say we went with a PLA, what would the delay be, and what kind of money are we looking at here?
I can't speak to what kind of money we'd be looking at in terms of the delays and whatnot that are involved, because the negotiations could take a day, they could take a month, a week, whatever they are. The, the issue at the moment is that we would, the, the town would not be the signatory to those. The signatory would be the CM at this point.
So that would be ONG that would be having to sign an agreement that would be hiring the unions or the non-unions.
They would have to do, they would be responsible for all the negotiations. Rick, is that correct?
Yes.
Before I misstate anything?
Yeah, they would hold the contracts.
Right.
Attorney Duggan, there seems to be some disagreement about these things. Do you know the correct answer?
No, I agree that the construction manager, risk, the construction manager, risk would hold the contracts after entering the subcontracts.
Okay, so you weren't on microphone, so you said because the construction manager is the one at risk.
Is that construction manager at risk?
Right.
That's the, we have it so.
Here comes Sean with the mic for you.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
So my understanding is that the town is entered into an agreement with the construction manager at risk, and then that entity actually holds the ability to enter into the subcontracts. So that would be the entity that would be entering into a PLA.
Okay.
Yeah, it would not be the town entering into it.
Right.
The CM would be the signatory to it.
Do you have further?
Yeah, so without a, well, if we brought somebody, when we go out to bid, we can offer these to union and non-union, so-
Absolutely. We don't-
It's just the PLA part of it.
The PLA would be for you people to decide whether you want to put that on top of everything else, yes.
And how tight are we right now on our timeline?
We're a year out already, Chris.
We're very tight. We just got the Superior Court to allow us to build the building. We actually, as you're well aware, we're on hold for almost four months. So, this is sort of 11th hour to us. If we had seen this much earlier, I think we would have had a chance to discuss it in a more rational manner. At this point, to, to take the time to have to go back to the CMs and have them renegotiate everything would put the schedules for all three schools into serious jeopardy.
Councilor Schmidt.
I recall that at the Fitch High project, in the science labs, there was a great deal of problem that occurred because of the gas lines to the science lab, and I don't know if that is part of the project, if it's part of something else, if it was an installation from the gas company. Perhaps you could let us know on that.
What we'll go through is, I mean, we'll go through all of our records, and because some of these things, if there was an issue with, with the gas being provided, or the amount of spigots, my words, that the Board of Ed wanted or required, there could be a difference, and then it was a change order. But talking from my memory-
Right.
-eight years ago, that's, that's not right.
Understandable.
But there's, there's several of those, we can identify those, those major issues, because they would have either come up on a change order, or there'd be an RFI, request for information to the architect, so.
And if you had any other issues that did come up, we would like to know about them. Thank you.
In, in none of those, in none of, in that case particularly, I don't understand how having a PLA or not having a PLA would impact that one way or the other.
I have no idea, but I'd like to find out if it does or doesn't. It's part of the project.
Mr. Brothers, I believe? You're going to need to speak into a microphone, sir, so you can-
I can probably enlighten you on why that, that contractor was non-union, Milton Beebe that did the site work there. Eight years ago, I was around back then as the building trades president as well, and that contractor probably would not have been on that job if it was a PLA. Those workers were from parts of Connecticut, but mostly Massachusetts.
I'd just like to briefly mention that I haven't had the opportunity to review the letter, but a PLA should have no impact on an architect's job. This is a way of supplying labor, so it shouldn't change the scope of the job. And with regard to ONG, I would anticipate one or two sessions, maybe two days, to finalize a PLA.
Thank you. Any other counselors have questions?
If I could just think one other comment, the building committee eight years ago approved the PLA.
So do any other counselors have questions? I have a question. One of the, the advantages in my mind to having a PLA would be hiring local workers. That can be written into a contract if we don't have a PLA, but my, my bigger issue is, do we have enough local workers to, if we had the PLA, would we still be getting the people coming in from Massachusetts? I mean, is, with the way hiring is now, everybody's working at EB. I've seen what used to be Doncaster's, they've had a sign outside saying that they were looking for workers for a long time now. So is it really going to have an impact if we had a PLA? Are there actually enough people that are looking for work that this would benefit at this point? So Mr. Brothers is responding.
The London Building Trades Council represents 15 building trades unions and approximately 20,000 workers. Right now, we're experiencing 40% unemployment, so there's plenty of workers out there to do the project work.
In the, in the trades that we would be using for this?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Norris, could you come up and use a mic, please?
Not, not to be argumentative, but the, a permanent school building committee did not approve a PLA last time, because it was a policy decision. They looked at it, they looked at the thing, passed it on to the council for their action, just like they did this time. So it is a policy decision that was not approved by the permanent school building committee, having been there, just to let you know that.
Not being argumentative, but they did approve it.
This is time for the council to ask questions, please, so we're trying to, to keep it directed in some way. Anyone else at this point? Councilor Heath.
On the ABC presentation, there's a statement, "Non-union companies make up roughly 84% of the construction industry in Connecticut. When 84% of the industry is eliminated to protect a select 16%, the result will be less bidders on the job." What's your feeling on this statement? Like, is the, the percentage, are the percentages valid?
Who are you directing at, too?
The school committee gentleman, LaFrance, Mr. LaFrance.
I don't know that the, that the numbers are valid or not. What I have seen in our research is that currently about 14% of workers in the state of Connecticut are union employees. That's my understanding. That may not be correct, but whether those numbers are correct or not, I am unaware.
Did you want to open it up to anyone else?
Yeah, we could ask the ABA where they got that percentage. Yeah, we could ask the ABA where they got that percentage.
Mr. Fricksel from the ABA, could you come up and please tell us where you got the statistics that you were using in your PowerPoint, please? We just need you on a mic. Thank you.
ABC, ABC. I can provide a citation for those numbers. I don't have it with me right now, but I certainly can provide that to the council. I can tell you that the number is fluid. It waffles back and forth a few percentage points here or there, but it is pretty easy for me to look up and send to the council.
So, if you could get that information to Mr. Burt, then he could disperse it to the rest of us, please?
Sure.
And the gentleman, I apologize to forget your name.
Mr. Shepherd, Attorney Shepherd?
The attorney, yes. You had said that these numbers are somewhat not accurate because many of these, the other 84% are too small or something to that effect.
If you take the time to examine the list and examine the types of projects they work on, you realize that it is nowhere near that number, okay? Their membership is very large, but in terms of the actual members that would work on a project of this size, it's nowhere near that. Nowhere near that.
Prevailing wage projects consist of the posted rate on a prevailing wage project. So, the certification comes from DAS. So, the contractors, they may be talking about, some of them may not be DAS certified. So, when they give you that list, make sure that the contractors are DAS certified to bid public work. That was part of our PowerPoint last time, two months ago, that we showed the DAS qualified contractors, the percentage that were union and non-union. There's a big swing there. We can get you that information as well.
Mr. Fricksel, you gentlemen can come up to the table. That way, you don't have to keep jumping up and down. I think he was going to... He wanted to add something, correct?
I just want to add...
Counsel Parker.
Can you guys please say what DAS is for the public? Because they're not going to know the aggregate.
Department of Administrative Services.
Thank you.
I was just going to add that regardless of what these gentlemen are saying, when there's not a PLA, there's more bidders. I mean, that's just what it comes down to. And one of the things I included in the presentation is the State Office Building, which is $145 million project. Seventeen... That was a... Went out to bid with a project labor agreement. Seventeen of the 35 bid packages had two bidders or less, including three bid packages which had zero bidders. So, you know, it's hard to argue if that was not a PLA, there'd be a heck of a lot more bids on that project. So, I guess that would be my response, is that regardless of, you know, DAS numbers, we could argue about that all day, when there's not a project labor agreement, you've got 100% of the contractors who will bid on it or 100% of the qualified contractors that can bid on it. If you do a PLA, you're eliminating qualified private...
Excuse me for a second. Gentlemen, can you please yield the floor? Thank you.
Yeah. If you do a PLA, again, we could fight about percentages all day long. If you do a PLA, you're eliminating bidders. Bottom line. You're eliminating qualified contractors who will bid on and perform the work. And we've seen that time and time again. Again, the Stanford School, two bids over budget, take the PLA off, and the bids quadruple.
Counsel Parker, did you have follow-up questions or was there something else you wanted to add? I just have a follow-up for that. So, you think the reason why there were two bids or less or three packages with zero bids on the State Office Building was because of a PLA?
That's correct. Part of their presentation was about why open shop contractors are allowed to bid on PLAs. Again, I'm not arguing that open shop contractors legally are not allowed. I concede that legally they are allowed. I'm just telling you that they won't. And he said it's a business decision. That's absolutely true. It's a business decision. It's a business decision not to bid on a project with a project labor agreement. And so, if this council thinks it's in the public's best interest to exclude whatever the... Again, we can fight over the percentages all day long. Let's just say it is a significant amount of the construction industry that you would exclude from bidding on this project.
Mr. Brothers.
Just to rebut that, the job he's referencing, the State Office project, is a PLA. And as of today, that job is under budget and on time. So, even though he's stating that the bidders were limited, at the end of the day, that's a state project and it's under budget and on time.
And again, having written this statute, they choose not to bid, okay? And your responsibility is to the community, to the people who live here, work here, vote here, spend here, raise their children here. Because regardless of who bids with a PLA, the people working on that project will be from this community. They'll be veterans, women, minorities, and so forth. And we have never, never not met or exceeded our goals, residents, women, minorities. These are the things you should consider. And with always, with the exception of the two out of 270, he's come up with a couple that perhaps were overbid, and I will check that. But I can tell you that the statistics... This is a decision, if you read the statute, it's a policy decision exactly for you, for your community, to increase employment opportunities in your community, regardless of who bids.
Do any of the counselors who haven't spoken yet have any questions? I think we're all good. Okay, thank you very much. So, we have contact information for everybody. We thank you all for coming out this evening, giving us your time to help us learn a little bit more about it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. And then when Mr. Schneider provides that information, Mr. Burt will forward it to all of us. Thank you. Okay. We are on to 5D, which is the lead update. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. We're going to take a five-minute recess to clear the room. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we're back from our recess, and we are on to item 5D, which is the lead update. Counsel Schmidt, there's no action, but if you just want to introduce it, please.
Yes, we see that Gary Schneider, the Director of Public Works, is here, and he will give us an update on the lead issues in the towns' buildings and schools.
Thank you.
Okay. What I will do is just on the town building portion of it, because I have no information on the schools, that they were working on that. So, what we did first do for our town buildings is that we compiled a list of buildings that were built before the Safe Water Drinking Act of 1986. After 1986, it had to be lead-free solder, no leaded pipe in that. So, what we're looking at is our older structure. So, this building itself here was built in 1999. We did not do any lead testing here because it's also on Groton City Water, and they test for lead in their system. So, we didn't test these buildings here. But all of our buildings, what we found, that we had 15 of these buildings, not including schools, were built before that Safe Water Drinking Act measures were in place. So, they were selected for testing. We contacted Mystic Air Quality. It's one of our local contractors in the area, and to complete a water sampling. The testing took place over several days, which was roughly from June 12th through the 24th, and involved a first draw test followed by a flush line test. First draws are conducted when there has been no water use in the building for 12 hours. A little bit difficult at the police station because they're always up there, but we were able to work around that a little bit. And then for the flushed line tests, samples were taken after the water flows for 30 minutes. So, after we got the results, we found that there were three structures, three buildings, that had lead above the limits. One was the Jabez Smith House. That is the structure that we have off of Route 117. And yes, it was built in the 1600s, but we do have a toilet and small kitchen in there. So, what we have done, we found that that had contained lead in the drinking water. The former Fitch Middle School had lead in only what we call the C and D wing. Fitch Middle School, the old Fitch Middle School, had two water services, one from Route 1, which serviced the two-story building and the large gymnasium. That tested clean. The C and D wing, which is the small cafeteria, the small gymnasium, and the D wing, which was the old elementary school, which we're going to be using for storage right now, those tested positive for lead. And that's... That water service came... Has... That water service comes off the Depot Road. That was the older water service. And then there was one structure here, and it's right in... That's right back in this building. It is an old barn that we use for our building maintenance personnel. We had just re-roofed and recited it. That was an old barn. That was part of the poor farm that was out here. That tested for water. So, what we are doing on the buildings for the Jabez Smith House, we've just shut the water off. There is nobody in that building. There is a committee that manages the building and wants to get information if they want to put somebody else to live in a building there. What we are planning to do is then from the service coming into the building, run plastic tubing, PEX piping. That should solve the issue there. But what we... When that happens, when the need is, we will repipe it and then, of course, retest it. I'll go to the barn in back here where the facilities maintenance people work out of. That's what we have done. We took... Ran the piping, ran new piping, PEX piping, from the water service coming in to the hand washing sink. That's what we really have there in the toilet, but you can fill up a bottle of water or drink from it. They do drink bottled water. And that, we're in the process of getting that retested now. We do believe that will solve that problem. For Fitch Middle School, it's a little bit more difficult. Wing A, which is a two-story building, and Wing B, we have no problem. But it's C and D wings. The C wing is that lower structure in between both of them that most of the rec programs are going to be in. So, what we are planning to do, what we've done already, is we hired a plumbing engineer to take a look if we can service the C and D wing from the clean water side. And what that involves is running new pipe. That's the easy part, but we have to... How many walls do we have to bust into? Do we have to take the fittings down? A part of it would be taking the old water fountains out and putting new ones in where it's required by code. So, we're in the process of working through that design to see if we have the flow enough, if we have enough pressure and water, and what fixtures we need per code. Working with Parks and Recreation for what they need in the building, the C wing there. And then we'll be moving on with that. If we need to... If... This will not be done when Parks and Rec needs to move its rec programs in there. So, we will, A, provide bottled water for those areas that require water. If we have to, we will open the lateral up, open the service up from the Depot roadside for flushing toilets and putting signs up, you know, just this water's just for flushing toilets. Just leave it at that. And we will then work through the number of water fountains. That would be bottled water. If there's hand washing sinks that we need for the toilets, we can rent portable ones for that. So, the process is, is that we're really good. We only found three buildings. We knew Fitch was probably going to be one of those that were going to show up. Half the building showed clean. The other half, we are doing something with, not spending much time on how to do it. We're not spending much time on what we should do, or we're spending our time and money on how we should fix, what we need to fix out there. Every other building turned out well. Turned out well. Passed. It did not have lead in it, so it passed the test. So, that's the update right now.
That's great. Thank you for the news. So, it's going to be not a plumber. More cost-effective to try to draw the water and repipe internally than to replace the feeder line from Depot?
Right. We go out there. Second thing, I then save a meter charge, and I save a lateral charge from Groton Utilities, too. And the D wing, which is that small, the old elementary school that really parallels Depot Road, we're only using that for storage right now. So, we really don't need any water there. We're going to shut the toilets down. There's a couple toilets there. We're going to shut them down. A couple water fountains were in there because it was the elementary school. We're taking those out. So, that wing could be dry. So, we just have the, what we call the C wing, where the old cafeteria was, the small gymnasium, and the arts rooms, the woodshop area there. So, we think we can replumb that easier from the clean water side, Wing A.
So, what kind of timeframe are we talking, when there will be the bottled water and everything?
We're looking at another four weeks to finish the design. It will need to be bid. We'll have a cost estimate with that. We'll see if it's easy, if Public Works can support it in operations budgets, if there are funds that need... If it's larger than what I can support myself in the budgets that we have, then my recommendation to the manager is that we put it out to bid, and then we seek a supplemental appropriation. The actual work itself could be six to eight weeks long. But... So, what we're looking at is two or three more months of not having piped water in Wing C.
I'm sorry. I didn't make myself very clear. How long... Is there bottled water in there now for when the parks programs move over?
There will be. Right now, there's no programs in there. We're looking at, I do believe, if Mark Breridge, September 7th is his first program. So, we're looking for the certificate of occupancy for that. We know we won't have Wing C done for drinking water or for hand washing, but we know that we can turn on the tap, turn back on to service for toilet flushing.
But will there be bottled water in there for the people that are using the parks programs?
Absolutely.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to know.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I wasn't clear.
No, no.
Anyone else have questions? Counsel Vaughn Gardner.
So, how far back did these issues go in terms of... How far back do these issues go in terms of the lead contamination?
Since... Don't know. I don't know. When they were first constructed, you know, lead solder in the joints and that, did it start leaching out then? Or does it start leaching out after so many years of the public water in it starts actually drawing the lead out of the solder? I don't know. Don't have a clue.
And was there any testing preceding the last testing?
Nope. None whatsoever. We didn't... We haven't... We did not look at that issue in anything in our public buildings. I think for two reasons. One, we... Groton Utilities and our other water company, which is Aquarian, is mandated by law for testing all of this stuff, and nothing showed up there. It's just, I think, people realizing that even if you have Groton Utilities water, if your house is built before 1986, there may be lead... There's probably lead in your solder of your copper pipes, and that may be leaching into the water that you drink at home. So, it's getting to the point, I think, people are getting more educated on the issue. So, it was something that we were not pulling from wells. We're pulling from sources of water here that were really good sources of water, and they were tested and didn't have lead in it.
So, we still don't know whether or not kids were drinking potentially lead-contaminated water?
That you'll have to ask the Board of Ed. Because I got the billing. There was no kids involved. There are no kids in there right now. We know that there were kids in the B wing, which is the large gymnasium, that tested clean. But there are no kids in the Jabez Smith House or the maintenance barn.
Thank you.
Counsel Atwater and then Franka.
Gary, when this issue first came up with the schools, I don't remember where we called someone saying that there were state funds available to rectify this problem. Is that something that would also apply to the town or is that just for schools?
I will have to ask Sam Kilpatrick at the schools. Don't know. I know of none. I know Mr. Gary usually points us to grant programs. You know, if there is something out there, that's from the does testing. They're pretty well tied into if there's grants out there. But let me ask Sam. I don't know. Thank you.
And I forgot to mention, Dr. Grinear notified us that he couldn't be with us this evening, but he will be providing an update in the future. Counsel Franka.
I was going to ask the same thing about state grants because I was under the impression that there are grants to help remediate these in towns. I don't know if it was school-specific or if it was with towns, but I think it definitely should be looked into. I don't know who looks in... If you looked into those on your department or is that more...
Yes. Well, no, what I do is I look into, but I'll do it the easier way. I'll ask Sam from the schools whether... What grants that he knows of. We also have a grant finder that we can go on and search for grants on the federal and state level. But I know of none, but I got my gut feeling it's for schools and not for public buildings. But I'll apply.
I've got some notes somewhere in my office from when we looked at it before, so I'll look at those. But I'm sure Sam knows.
Anything else on this?
I read a few articles after this issue came up, thinking, there's no lead since 1980, you know, everybody should be fine. What's going on with this? It turns out there's still... I mean, not still, but they were still putting lead in like light fixtures and stuff like that. So, you might want to at some point look at anything that the kids are touching and make sure... that the kids are touching, and, and make sure it's not got lead in it.
At Fitch, well, Fitch Middle, let's go Fitch Middle, we, we are going through all the building, if there's the fluorescent light bulbs, we still have some old ones in there, they'll have covers on, there should be no mercury switches there, we will take those out, so we're going through room by room for some of those, those items that we know of. But we'll, we'll, anything, any rooms that the kids are in, we will, we will make sure that they're as, they're clean as possible. Of course, there's no friable asbestos, there's no, any of the other stuff has either been painted or covered over, so we're making them as safe as possible, knowing PCBs, lead, and mercury.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you, Mr. Snyder. Onto item 5E, there's no action required, but Councilor Baumgartner, if you want to introduce it, please.
Absolutely. So the issue at hand, report to the Town Council regarding the work accomplished by the Sustainability Fellowship from the University of New Hampshire Sustainability Institute. The fellowship was conducted through the UNH Sustainability Fellows Program, a result of the town's partnership with the New England Municipal Sustainability Network. Andrea Mott, who has joined the town for the summer as part of the fellowship, will present the results of her summer work to the Town Council.
I'd like to introduce Andrea, she's been here for approximately 10 weeks now, putting together information and really updating some of our old stuff that we got, we actually started back on a DOE grant 10-some years ago, and we were really in need of updating it, so she's done some significant work for the town, she's got several reports for us that we'll publish to the Council upon their completion, but we'd like to have her tell the Council the work that she's done, and those things that she saw, as far as energy efficiency and conservation measures that, that we were looking at in the town. So I'll let Andrea tell you her story.
Thank you for coming up and for doing your work.
Thank you for the opportunity. Hi, my name is Andrea Mott, I am a senior mechanical engineering major with an Energy Systems concentration from the University of Dayton in Ohio. There I work on the campus energy team, meaning I help conduct energy audits to find cost savings for my university. But here, as Rick was saying, I am the Sustainability Fellow from the University of New Hampshire, which is through the NUMS Network, the New England Municipal Sustainability Network. I have created three reports this, throughout my 11 weeks here, and the first one is a greenhouse gas inventory report, so basically tracking all of the emissions that the town municipal operations produce. The second is to determine the effectiveness of all the, of kind of what the town has done up to date, so how effective had previously strategies been? And then the third is to use all of these to help create some emission reduction strategies, and, and lay out an energy action plan. So to start, to start with the town progress to date, as Rick was mentioning, that there was an energy audit that happened in about 2013, or actually it was before that, but the report was done in 2013, where a group came in and did a bunch of audits of municipal buildings, and, and the town schools, and some actions have been completed, some haven't. About 50% of the low-hanging fruit recommendations have been completed by the town, town buildings, but only about 6-7% have been completed for the, for the schools. So basically, there's a lot of room for improvement in the energy efficiency for the buildings. The town has also installed the three electric vehicle charging stations that were from a grant. One of the most clear, obvious success stories is the, the streetlights to LEDs, converting all those to LEDs on the town-owned streetlights, saved emissions by 67% in energy and costs. So, that's a clear indicator of how, how effective just switching light bulbs to LEDs are, it's a quick, quick payback. Two schools have been switched to natural gas, with more, more coming. The one caveat about, caveat about natural gas is that even though there's this common perception that it burnt, that it is cleaner, but it's actually, it really only burns about 27% cleaner than fuel oil. And plus during natural gas extraction, there's a lot of methane that is released, and methane is about 21 times more potent than carbon dioxide. So there is this, this fear that if you switch to natural gas, that you would get stuck using it to, to heat your buildings. There are some communities that use natural gas to, use the funds from that to convert to renewables in the future, but the fear, once again, is getting complacent with just those immediate reductions. Moving forward, the town of Grattan is also, as I mentioned earlier, part of the NUMS Network, and recently joined the Sustainable Connecticut. There's a lot of Sustainable Connecticut's program that, that really lays out a lot of opportunities towns can do, and gives opportunities for grants, and, and pretty much tracking that progress. In addition, we also haven't done that much with Sustainable Connecticut, so that's a very big room for, room for progress there. And Rick has been working on some solar planning for the landfills, just another project. So, to the big, most, big part of my project was creating this greenhouse gas inventory, and what I did was basically, I compiled all of the energy produced by the town offices, the schools, the parks and recreation, the streetlights, pump stations, water pollution control facility, basically all of the buildings that, that, pretty much everything under municipal control is included in this municipality. Also included is emissions from, from station, from transportation, such as the municipal fleets, and employee commuting. So this kind of gives us an understanding of, well, where are these emissions coming from, what, what percentage are, and really help identify the room for improvement. How do you actually do reduction strategies if you don't know what the starting point is? So this is definitely a good starting point of determining how effective some measures are. So, there has been a 10% reduction between fiscal year 14 and fiscal year 17, and when I normalize that for weather, about 5% of that is due to weather. And that's because fiscal year 14 was a pretty cold year, so a lot more heating oil was required. The school, the school stationary fuel, it's kind of hard to tell on this, on this projection, but you'll be able to see more in the reports. This, the major reduction there is due to, due to the school stationary fuel, and once again, that is a lot, a lot incorporates weather, and some due to HVAC set points and such. So this, this reduction of 10% equivalents to about 1,352 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalents saved, and what that, that means, because nobody really understands that number off the top of their head, is that equates to 290 passenger vehicles driven to one year, and that's also equal to 3.3 million miles driven by an average, average passenger vehicle saved, 146 homes' energy usage per year, and that is also the amount of carbon that is sequestered by 1,592 forests. So just to give a perspective of, well, what does that mean when we're actually talking about savings that the town, that the town produces? So, like I said before, the goal of tracking emissions is to determine, well, how do you actually reduce them? Where do we go from here? So I created this reduction strategy chart, and on the far left bar is the baseline, and so that is what we're currently at at fiscal year 2017. And I, I've composed a bunch of the different, most common ways to reduce emissions, such as employee carpool, so say for instance, 20% of the employees' commuting emissions were able to be reduced, and that could either be due to carpooling, taking other forms of transportation, such as walking or biking, teleconferencing. If you reduce that by 20%, so you can see the first bar, it's a 3% reduction. To mention again, the fuel oil to natural gas, if you replace all of the fuel oil that heat up all the buildings, you, to natural gas, you would get a 6% reduction. Once again, that is great, and there's a lot of cost benefits to doing that, especially as fuel oil prices increase. However, there is once again the fear that you get stuck with that 6% reduction, and can't really move on beyond that. Making buildings 20% more efficient could reduce emissions by 12%, and there's a lot of cost savings opportunities within making buildings simply more efficient, by doing audits. An ambition, a pretty high ambition, but worth noting is switching gas vehicles to electric vehicles, and installing renewable, renewable, energy sources such as solar. So if, if the town installed one megawatt of solar, which is a lot, granted, that powers about 60% of the town's electricity usage, you would get a 19% reduction. So that shows that the major big reductions really do come from investing in renewable energy. And yes, renewable energy such as installing solar, it does have really high upfront costs. So it's often one of those things where you're like, yeah, that sounds like a great idea, except we don't have the funding in order to do it. There is a lot of funding opportunities out there, fortunately, especially through C programs such as CPACE, ESPCs, O's, and, and a lot of government grants are out there. If only someone has the time to dedicate and research into those financing options, definitely would be a next step. The final, the final bar kind of shows if you combine all of these emission reduction strategies together, it really does show that if you want to reach these big goals, you gotta, there, there has to be a lot of different combinations together. It cannot be independently just investing in solar, just investing in electric vehicles, it has to be a group, and combined from all. It's worth noting that the state of Connecticut has a reduction goal of 20% reductions by 2020, and an 80% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions by 2050. The town of Grattan has not actually officially committed to a goal, but it suggested to adopt that goal also, such as a lot of other municipal in that area. Having that committed goal is a good way to just have a dedicated, this is the plan, this is where we're going to move forward. The final step of my project was to kind of compile this energy action plan, and break down, break down the different strategies to take, to, to make these reductions happen. And once again, I lay out these things in a lot more detail in my reports, so I really urge you to read it, to kind of figure out, well, where, see some more figures behind the numbers, and, and the states of how, how I actually did everything. But, some of the basic goals here, pretty general, but goal one, reduce energy usage and increase energy efficiency. Goal two, implement cost-effective renewable energy. Once again, these first two goals have a lot of financial savings that can result from it. Some were very low-hanging fruit, such as replacing the lights LEDs in the schools, or updating some of the HVAC systems and set points. Goal three, invest in electric vehicles to reduce fleet fuel usage. Switching, we currently have one electric vehicle, and currently, switching to, from a gas, a gas vehicle to electric vehicle, actually saves about $1,200 roughly a year, annually. Goal four would be to make sustainable resources and knowledge available more publicly. I feel like as a town, there's really kind of this responsibility of how do you get that information out there to the, to the people, so, so they know what opportunities are available, especially like the CPACE program for, for solar financing, that is for commercial industries and residential, that they can implement solar themselves if they apply. And I think that goal number five is perhaps the most important, which is to create a committed municipal team to reach these goals. So right now, I have been very, very glad that I've been able to be here this summer to help push forward and compile all of these, these things together to determine, well, where are we at, to track the energy, and, and lay a great starting point for the future. But the fear is that, well, that's great, but it won't be continued. So, one of my big proposals is to, is to hire a grant writer, and I know this is something that's been proposed in the past, I believe, but once again, to find those financial opportunities, to track the energy, to determine where the reductions are. These things really do have those financial savings, but it just takes time, and there needs to be manpower in order, in order to supply it. Other recommendations along that same line is to have an internal committee dedicated in the town to, to complete these goals, and the third is to continue this, this fellowship in future summers. Yep, and here's a quick final poster that I produced for the, my fellowship that I presented last Friday, and thank you again for this, this opportunity to, to speak to you and present on my summer's work. It's really been an incredible summer in beautiful coastal Connecticut. Thank you. Any questions?
I do have, before I turn it over, your reports are going to be made available to all of us?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, as soon as she, as soon as they're finished with their final editing, we'll, we'll get them transmitted to the Council.
And are you going to get a copy of her poster?
Yes, we will, we're going to put that on the website, we're going to put it on Facebook, we're going to post it in the building here, and any other place we can find it.
That would be wonderful.
Because there's a tremendous amount of information on that poster. And recently, through the NUMS Network, or through the Sustainability Institute, we were able to, I was able to go see the other 22 fellows that were doing various projects for other communities, plus the New England Sustainability Network, and there's, there's tremendous information out there, and these kids are really doing a good work for us.
Did you say you were present when she did her poster?
Yes, yes, yes.
Very nice.
Yeah, it was very nice. There are some other things, you know, solar panels, people are talking about that, she talked about on the landfill. We're waiting for presentation, we have been talking with the company that we have a lease, option to lease the landfill with. They need to come to the Council at some point and talk about extending that, that lease, but first they need to provide, obviously, the department, their program, what they intend to do, how they intend to do it. That's a, looking at a five, potentially a five-megawatt system. You know, for us, it's not something a municipality usually, usually operates, so it would probably be operated by the constructor, and we may buy energy from it. The state has changed some of their rules, they're making it a little more attractive to these companies to put those in, and the cost would not be to the town. You know, we would just basically receive lease funding for the land, which would kind of bring us some income, but also make it easy on us. Another big project that's going on is the Public Works Garage, they're looking at changing the heating system from steam to water, connecting to natural gas, putting condensing boilers, which are very efficient in there. So those are a couple of the major projects that are going on, and that's the CIP project. So the, so some of the numbers that Andrea shows as far as converting to gas, if you change the boilers, make those more efficient too, those savings increase over what was, was predicted by simply changing what the existing equipment to gas. You know, enter point again for, we did have, when we set up the Sustainability Division, we did have a grant writer that was slated, we also had a person that was a half-time accountant-type person, who could keep all our utility information up to date if, if the Council chose at some point to fill that position.
Councilor Heed.
There was a slide that showed the amount of fuel oil the schools use to heat.
Oh, this one? Oh, sorry.
Right, so if we have water boilers in the school, that's the heating source, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so, I have a hypothesis.
Sure.
I have solar panels on my house, so during the day I sell energy to Grattan Utilities, nighttime I buy it back, they will pay for themselves, never. But I also, when I looked at this, I looked at a system that, they, it's just like two panels, I think, as opposed to the 20 or something that's on top of my house that feeds into the water boiler system, so then instead of going to natural gas, you go to, is that a cost-effective way, and then you skip the natural gas conversion, just go right into solar?
Well, you're talking about, basically about preheating system. I mean, that works great in the daytime, in California it worked great, I had that on my swimming pool back in, what, 1982 or something like that, that actually heated the swimming pool, and they were very crude black panels at that time. There is sort of, on these larger buildings, I don't think the techno, we'd have to look at the technology, and we certainly investigate that, but some of it's not mature, for example, solar panels, depending on the roofs and that sort of thing, we looked at these buildings here, we looked at the police station, we looked at other existing buildings, and it was difficult to place panels on them that weren't shaded, that had sufficient room, that had, that sort of thing, and they only, they would only provide a portion of the power. So, looking at the return on investment is something that, that's critical to us, and we saw that on the LED lights, you know, we had a, basically a four-year return on investment, so in a couple of years, we'll be saving $100,000, but the solar panels haven't shown that yet. But that doesn't mean we're not continuing to investigate them.
Chris Mott was nodding, go ahead.
Yeah, just to add to that, so the passive solar heating, like you're mentioning, or the geothermal heat pumps, those are definitely strategies that are worth investigating.
Right.
And there just hasn't been that time and ability to really thoroughly determine what those savings would look like. So that's definitely a next step for that, for that criteria.
Councilor Baumgartner, and then Franco.
So first and foremost, thank you for, for taking the time to do this thorough research and a pretty amazing presentation. and a pretty amazing presentation.
Thank you.
And I have a few, quite a few questions, but I'll limit it certainly because I'm sure a lot of other folks have questions. On the issue of, you had mentioned about using alternative fuel sources, but did you at all explore, you know, fuel cells and how they can be utilized? I know that some of them depend on natural gas and some of them depend on hydrogen. I know the Pfizer campus has fuel cells for power generation, as does now the sub-base. You know, is that potentially an area that Groton could explore to not only reduce costs associated with, you know, with providing the energy, but also reducing the carbon, our carbon footprint?
I know, I personally don't know a ton about fuel cells, but...
Yeah, we used, the department had investigated that early on. The technology during that investigation was not quite mature, plus the cost of installation, and the payback was longer. There was a microgrid program out there with the state. Again, you need the manpower to be able to do that. I mean, all these things are, the ideas are great, moving forward with them is great, but they take time. You know, and she mentioned these ESCOs, which are companies that come in and say, these are all the things we can do for the town. They figure out how to design it, they finance it, you pay for it basically out of the town utilities, and there's some payback period. And we had talked to some of those early on, but they weren't, like several years ago with the previous town manager, but they weren't attractive enough to the town at that particular time to move forward with them. But that's not something we couldn't investigate again.
Now, when I, I served in the state legislature, I wrote a bill that extended a green bean program to do funding for anaerobic digesters. And essentially, what it is, is compost waste, so, and that waste can be, you know, be utilized not only to create compost for your garden, but also generate a form of, you know, a natural gas almost. So is that an opportunity maybe where, you know, down the road as we're looking to get to that, you know, potentially 80% reduction by 2050, you know, looking at, you know, how we, you know, operate our, you know, our waste, you know, as within Public Works and actual, you know, trash hauling, whether we could, we should be limiting the amount, you know, we throw away, you know, our food scraps, our, you know, banana peels, our newspapers, and convert it into almost money?
Yeah, definitely. I mean, waste is a huge issue, I mean, you just nailed it right there. And that to make these giant reductions, you really do have to combine all of these different sectors together. And I think even if maybe the waste generation for fuel here, like here actually in the town, from buildings and such, probably won't supply enough power to do anything significant, but it could definitely encourage people to think more about where their waste is coming from and how to, and encourage alternative ways of thinking.
Burlington, Vermont, for example, has a very good composting program where they actually give people a package, they put it on their kitchen counter, they put stuff in it. Some folks ride around with bicycles, collect it all up, take it to a specific point. We, in fact, did look at that anaerobic digestion stuff for the wastewater treatment plan, but we didn't have enough material coming out of there to power the plant. So what you would need, I mean, if we could get into the composting thing, develop a program, get to a stage where we had enough material that that would be efficient, then it's certainly something that should be looked at. I agree.
And very shortly, I'll be attending the CEAT meetings. I'm the, almost the ambassador from the council to the CEAT, the Southeastern Connecticut Transit Authority. And essentially, they run our county-wide bus system. So are there any recommendations that you would recommend as Groton's advocate to that group?
For the buses?
Yes.
That was kind of one of the issues we didn't touch a ton in the study because it was such a large-scale, such a large-scale issue that was kind of more outside of specifically the town of Groton's control and went more broader. But definitely, reducing, encouraging the public transportation and giving people alternative ways to move around and get from point A to point B, because Groton's not exactly super-friendly for walking or biking with all the hills and lack of some sidewalks on major roads. But buses is definitely a great way to reduce those emissions and expand that.
And hopefully, if we can get a fellow back that can carry on where Andrea left off this time, we concentrate this time on municipal-controlled stuff. If we can expand it to the broader community, which we should do next time around, we can get into some of those broader issues like public transportation and trails and energy use by the general public and how you help them do stuff. Some of the things are happening organically, like Rita could tell, she went out and put solar panels on her house. A lot of people are doing that, and it's really not something the town needs to get involved in or push because it's happening. You know, so we need to look at what time we spend on those things that we can help either provide information or that we control ourselves. And things that are working, let them work, you know, and if we can help with it, that's great.
Well, we could talk about this probably all night, but I know a lot of other folks have questions, and I hope we, I don't know if the city of Groton was included in their operations there, but I hope we can also share, you know, our findings and work cooperatively with the city as well.
Yeah, we'd hope to, we'd hope to bring them in next time around, too, but it's just...
Counselor Franco.
So when we talked about solar, and I'm going to continue a little bit, I have already forwarded some information to the town manager. I put on solar, and it was a Connecticut grant. It was put on my home completely free. It reduced my electric bill by probably over 33%. And when I went back and looked, I believe it's Connecticut Sustainability, there are grants from municipalities as well.
Yes.
So when it comes to putting solar panels on roofs, I don't think they just have to go on a roof. I mean, I think there's many more options than that. So when you've looked at the roofs and you don't think that's enough...
Well, and we've looked at other areas, I mean, we've talked about other areas with folks, for example, a hillside next to the police station. You know, that's a pretty attractive place.
Possibly reducing the amount of oil we're purchasing.
Right.
I mean, that, I mean, even a third is substantial.
Right.
If it could be done in our larger municipal buildings.
Okay, understand.
So I would think that should be pursued, especially with the grants and things of that nature, and I believe it's been, we have brought up some issues where we are in need of grant writers for more than just this, but for other areas of the town.
Right.
So...
Definitely. And I would say that if we're looking at the slide that's currently displayed there, I'm assuming when you say stationary fuels, that's the fuel that is burnt in the buildings, correct?
Yes.
So we're looking, we're here for the meeting and the hearing, we're going to be building a new middle school, which will take two old schools offline, and we're going to be building two new buildings for elementary schools. So when those come online, that will shrink dramatically, I assume, just because of the more energy-efficient buildings that are going to be built.
That's correct.
So that'll be a big savings there.
Yeah, for example, when we built the high school addition, we saved like $100,000 in fuel oil the first year, heating oil. So bringing on these more efficient buildings, retiring some of the older ones, and that's, of course, has to be my goal, and I'm now the sustainability project program manager, but also now the schools fellow, is looking at those systems that are most efficient for those buildings and making sure that we can look at the operational costs as a part of really the construction and make sure that those costs are minimal as we move forward.
Any other counselors have questions for Ms. Mott? No? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
You said that you were graduating this year?
Yes, I'll be graduating my undergrad in December.
Maybe Town of Groton should consider having you come back and work for us full-time.
Yeah, we've been lobbying for that, but we'll see, maybe, maybe next year if she takes a break in her, in her master's courses, we could get her back next summer.
Counselor Franco had one more question.
I was wondering, have you gone and spoken to our conservation committee as well?
No, I have not.
I think maybe we should have her attend a meeting and...
Well, she's leaving tonight.
Oh, you're leaving tonight?
And going to Dayton tomorrow. But that's certainly something that we should consider is before we do any of some of these things, we really ought to bring in some of the other commissions and agencies and those sorts of things to make sure we're all not doing something that provides unintended consequences, you know, which I'm kind of big on. We've got to make sure it fits, it's the right thing.
And I think the conservation committee could help in ways that might alleviate some of you doing all that work. You might ask them to help you out with some things.
So when your reports are forwarded to Mr. Burt, then they can be distributed then to the appropriate boards and commissions for our consumption?
Yeah, and they'll be online, they'll be on Facebook, all the other places that we advertise the stuff that we do.
Well, we thank you so much for spending your summer doing work for us. It's wonderful, it's certainly beneficial. And we do, I believe, as a council, feel this is very important, and it's something that we hope the town can move forward with. So thank you very much, and good luck to you in your final year.
Thank you.
Thank you for providing the time.
Yes.
You're welcome. All right, and we are on to the Telecommunicators Collective Bargaining Agreement. And I believe we're going into executive session. Do we move this first and then go into executive session? Or we'll move this when we come out?
Make the motion to go into the executive session afterwards. Sean's going to stick around.
All right, Counselor Heed, could you move that, please?
I hereby move that the members of the Town Council Committee of the Whole, along with the Town Manager John Burt and Human Resources Director Assistant Town Manager Bob Zagami, go into executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes 1-202 for the purpose of discussing strategy and/or negotiations with respect to collective bargaining units. I so move.
Second. Moved by Heed and seconded by Atwater. All those in favor of going into executive session for the purpose of human resource discussion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. We're in executive session at 8:23. My turn. Okay, we are out of executive session at 9:03, and we are going to Counselor Parker, the 5F on page 18.
I make a motion to recommend a resolution approving the tentative Telecommunicators Collective Bargaining Agreement. I so move.
Second. Moved by Parker and seconded by Franco. Any discussion on this item that we can do publicly? We had to do most of this in executive session because it does involve personnel matters. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the tentative Telecommunicators Collective Bargaining Agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. Okay, and that takes us to review of other agenda items. Does anyone have anything else that they wanted to go over or other business? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Make a motion.
Second.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Baumgartner. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. We are adjourned at 9:05.